A total of economy. Post the government, oh, oh, guy, we saw a lot, but very quick and short. That way along each individual countries. Although, eh, oh, I repair our family. Oh, thank you very much. As I know, the committee. The board, actually. Ladies, all of you, it's a. Yeah, oh, oh, on local municipality. Then, ladies. Welcome all of you. All welcome. For you. As well as members of the committee. Eh, chair who have also extended. For all our council. Now, in the municipality where there are nine towns. Starting from Forests, any police. One of the councillors I identified. After him, eh. You know, this, M two of what is in any. Code. Of one. And. Majority, yeah, but to baruna, by the way, yeah. Has it. That they are not participating that marginally. Said that they can't. They just consider. But the people who agree. Although there are opportunities, I believe. Government is. Such. About it. And also think. That the health of the economy. Think committee or government, I think. But. Has come up with progress that I did. Also that. Warona, others. Party. On. And also. Are behind column. As we have said, chair, I'm not. Going to be long. Terms of column, but I hope those who are here. Are part. Just reaching the one alley. I'm sure no other committee. From my party. But. Or. Are going to participate. Whenever they say for. Participate. As. Okay, we. We are still. Understand it. The disease. So yeah. I don't have. Ouch. Ah, the video. So. Eh, the by the issue, they have a. Thank you so. The one of our mother, who. While we have some. It was the legislative. Part of our Monday. They are coming to participate. That is why forever. How about the middle out, the middle one, I don't know. This kind of consulting. I want to hold a regard information. For that part. Eh, I must tell you. There is a one. Hello, in this time, so, or in the. On local economic transformation. That's where the every. At this year, that every man. And that. They get it. They get down to the. They get. They get. Yeah, I can. I know, put them on. I mean, when I read the night, she got a look. In the moment, oh, look. Eh, it is the one who. She is mobile, but just. She's challenging. When you might. You go, you go, oh, now, oh, hey. I wanna. The most famous of the. Oh, in the day. Ah, that's how the. That. For. Yeah, how not me law, it don't. I. It's not only my. Was the child. That's why we are allowed to. Para mental, like. But we don't. Ah, it's. Forever, it's my. Was the child. Hello, in the net. That it, I remember the door. Don't know. Oh, I'll post it, you know, I go. My each part. That's. Yeah. Eh. I think I'm not aware. Solar. It is for. I don't know, you part of Miami, you're on. Over the middle, over the. Now, I go. I will go. It's a presentation, they are. For. And I hope. It's very. Your woman. Hello, in the. That's who to. I see. What's the. Well, I think. And eh. Only the man. He, but that you are, but he. And put in a. And there, I will. I am. Then, then, it's by send them. Paragraph, by paragraph. But the right is. That are very important, the. The. All about that. To my. Well, now, oh. I need that stuff. So see. That they do. Who know. That they do. I'm a president, I am a. And. Do you have money? At the end, the. So, I'm sorry, it's all. It's a lot. That's what. So, I'm. So, I don't know, that I was. The watch. Or. So maybe. Ah, we said. So, it's. Ah, the. About. The books, they don't. But make the way. That's. So, I'm. So, me, I. Eh, the presentation. It don't. I hope, or I don't got the hours. Then, when I. Yeah, it.
... Kama muna Nani kuna kasi Eh, sata kisweki ba aliwa nini kumela na muna sika muna Sisat nasi La sichayama Den eh, badikisita kasi kisita Siti muna En den ha siri muna It means Sibla bojulu Rata kana ma Kama hani muna Den eh Ki tho kafela muna na ki salusa eh Ure na Eh, diina isiri tarbana Eh, we ya ka kau lu ya uki timu Eh, di kijita kau lu Kamu ku se eh, buriki kiba ane Eh, baku Banan lema enu abu juru Ba eh, bangsere Den eh, nchweni sasa muna kuri Eh, la thokon eh, ba ay Pa muna South Africa Le banan li bu ai ba musere Bu ai ba musere li ba thwala ba thwala ni fera ni residence Da kama sisa sisa kisur Ba ane fera ni residence Ri, kiseki kiba u ba uwe ba ai ba Pa muna We ya kama muna Kiba ba ayaru Imba na bas na eh, tukele kau na kona Rato ba kati kisese Den pa ru na ni ba ay Renal ba ba ku pa tui kore ni ba ai ba musere Guri kijita fera ni residence Na ri, renal ba ni kisese We ya ka tu komanina Eh Den ni kia o kau lu Ya u ne Kau lu ya u ne mu Ri, burito di taburu Eh, South African start Sa u sa si tho Sei kare elan ka magara ama amam musu Ri ri eh, ma lu Le banan yo ka si tho Sei kare bela Si tho si kare bela Muna di ba ni tene yaro Ki eh, tu na magarama ha Na ri tu na la Eh, we ya ka tu komanina Li, kiro na li tho tukisang ba ay Ako bani li maspa Tu tho shida ba ay kau Tu tho ba eh, ma kete la kisisi sa u Eh, tu ba tukisahaye ba ay Eh, tu ka hu tro mu ka Di kisisi sa u Mo li rin ka fele luna li eh, bo Rafe bo lebo mafe Tu tho ba ni kijilin rata le renal ni data bis Etale li li maspa Data bis yena li maspa Tu tho bua kau ne li maspa li li protesti Mo li rata menzi borni Eh, me new le tate new E na ki ku thwa desa ekti Eh, desa yo ika desa ba ni ku ta na ni data bis Mo li li ru na li di ba ni tene Tu tho fa ni ka Ba tu ba Ga ni tane kama sisa asa kasi Sisweki eh, eh, eh Eh, ba thwala ba ta ba ni tu ho beze Tu ho beze u Kita ba kha la ne Ali wa nuni ho be ya au ki Ho be ya uwe zai Pina chika uwe zai Ri, tu tho bua li musu Musu tu tho bua le ba tu Ba ni ku ba ni ta ni te uku Ka ba ni kama ba ni te uku ka ba Di eh, bo so prek bo mama Eh, bo ma ku Mo li rin di sisa kalu Di tare li li chefzine Eight percent eh, di sisa kalu Etale li li eh, chefzine Eh, habe di kuwa ku kau Eh Kita ve kaka ma Ri, we ya ka Rula li musu Reni ho kisaa me aho ka ba di ba Muna li me aho eke imuna E lo ni ki me aho esasili ti Ma me aho yeu E kana ya ku na li ete di kisahoru Den renal li musu Ren me aho yeu esasili ti Musu oya ka tu komanina Li tu na la Le ta kuisa Le ba tu ba Ai kama nasi li maspa O kuisa le ba ni ka ba tu ba ni ku bi ti kisete Mo li esasili ti Mu musu tu li kirela kisete iku Eh, ba ane ba tu ba ni kati ba ni tane ku ba tu E lo ni musu ku na ba kaka Runa isiri ta ta ra Ju ta ta ra ma hara mu Le ta kisahatu Musu oya ba Eh Ri, we ya habe li Ko kau lu ya uka Di maspa Ri ri eh, di maspa Ga ni tane kama sisa li Di maspa Ah ni na ni ba los Ga ni, kamu la six months Ha mu ku we Mo ka eh, tu kama ni tene Di ta kama musina sika Tu tho fa Di maspa Ni tane kia uka Ta ba Di maspa Tu keta six months Urba i tu kisi Ba i kama hani Den tu ri kisanga uki Ba los Eh, di ba losuka business bylaws Remba ay kira ku tureli sa muna Ri, sisa kana kisahatu Ga ni, maspa Ay kama hani Six months Abana li di business bylaws Te li rin ha ni eka muna Kita beni eka lo le ga ni eh Me le tate new Aga ni la ho bulan ite Tu tho le fa di business igali License Eh, license ete damu nati Di ku ete amu ku la nu Li kama ya ni tu te li ba ta Ri, memba ku li Tu li kuwa ku la ni Re fa Ba tu twenty Percent ba shakana Eight percent kelo na ba ay Le ba tu ba Ba kama ni Den ho bulan la urne Ba tu bas na tu ke Se iku Bas na bas na Ga ni tane kama sisa wa ta bas na Di benga ka mune En den ho ku mitu urne Ba tu ba ba ngata Bis kati sile damu Aba thwa ba ni benga ka mune Aga ni Aba ba ta sisa And then habe Eh Abana Urne kiba kijima muna Ga ni ho bulan la urne Uto mi tika ni Ba ba ngata Ba ku tu ba ni ku uka uki tika muna ku na Uto ba tu ku uki tika Den tu kisupreita pa lo urne Li twenty percent ya hani sile ita So fuma na hana twenty percent Ta ba ni ba thwa ni tene Ba ta bas na tu kisitu Te urne Di kirela kisoka De uka ba thwa iku Ga ni, di maspa na kisatu Di kama ni no Kahara di LED Aga ni ta ba ba ku eke di LED Te ri, ki di LED te urne Ba kapasiti tu Ho ba ni fuma na ni Ha ni tika di maspa ni tene ngata tina Eh, ha una Nchweni tika ngau li ki Eh, enforcement Ri ri, ha ni keti li Ka ni kiena Kita beni li kuwa ni di maspa Iba ni nchweni tika gi enforcement Ba ni le ba tu ba Ba kama ba ni ku yo E lo ho ku ni tana ku Ta ba ni sisa na le ba tu asarsi Sisa na le ba tu ba ni gresi Le ba tu Banan lo ni ku ba tu ba eh, le mapo niisa Wo ri, ri shaka kuwa Ili ulan la habe ka muna If we na Ho le mu ai ba Usu fuma ni license Iba we na ho ni kama hani muna ku na Obu iku ni ngata Den we na eh, tu aku na Nchweni tane six months Ma hai salusa kama muna Han tane kene Six months yena Chela jatin ki Ga ni, lu na he Ga ni ka ba tu Pa li rin bo na Li chayla Ha li chayla tu kama ni Uri sika muna Ha ni bulan la uki Nera kaha lu na Ba tu ba eh, ba distia Li kila ni kiena Ma ku mu tefela kama muna Tefela six months Ha ni ku uli Lu na he Nana na he Ri ri Ho na tu kama ni u Le ta tu urne Mu tu utai six months ka ba pata le Fifty thousand Utai wa na na le ba ta pata Fifty thousand Kapana na ni le Le wa ta ten thousand Li ta ipe la ku kuwa Ri, rabona kama nu Lu na ba tu di distia Eh, le ba ni tama muna Ha la kiena kama muna urne Di kirela kela six months Ha li uli shere Li kana li ka fu la he Bu na ri Ra fu li Shere di kana ka Fifty thousand di ka fu Eh, ten thousand Ha rasa kama hani muna ku na Eh Ki na na uli Nta kama sisa lo Usan iku uli Le ho ri eh, skijua ni mu Lu na di kisisi sa u Te ri, ni tura di kisisi te Te ri ku mu tuma ni tuki di Di bulan la urne Reni mu ay Wa South Africa Le ba ay ba uwa rin bo La kiba kama ni Ba ni kama ni residence Ri ri, ki wa na kati ba ta Eh, di kisaha ni tati ba ta Harba ki ma ta pa ma fe la Ta ta muna Lu fe la desaha If na ni desaha ya urne Ye no tava ni ta taksho Na taksho pe harfu la Harfu ni ki taksho Harfu ni ki uli Ho ita shabu Ga ni, te ri Te ri kati te ri bi ni muna Ki thwa iku Ili tu na la na li thwa ya urne Te te bu Is bua ba tu ba Only for South African citizens And those who have permanent residence Ki oya eighty percent Ba tu ba ni kuwa ni Ta keta ku na fe la Ha ri eighty percent Ha rita percent Ta ba tu Te na te tu mu tuma ni tuki Ta kama sisa ni kina usan ika di ya Ri, ga ni eh Okay eh, ten percent Ki na na uli Eh, ki di ame zeti u Ki na na sifra ku ba ni ku tu Eh, liska la ho ku la Skala le ba ni ku bulan la urne Hasel na ku shoku muna Skala rova ni ku shoku Ga ni rova ni ba thwa ni Ba ruva ni ta ri shoku
Eh, sorry we But no Do Distio To the good eh, the team Eh, ki na go ya ni ku to he Eh, lu yeza di himu Ti bo lo ni Nene na nashtan cho hasa Da keni alim Sichwan cho sinse alim Sichwan cho se kabo se Egi kame deki genimo And we were told that councillors are here There's an important area That speaks to the whole responsibility of council Which is the bylaws And I know for a fact even yesterday There was an emphasis that Our councillors eh, they disregard the bylaws But necessarily this time around That should be the starting point Because we are talking economy If the country is able to fix its own economy Therefore the employment Will be able to deal with poverty in a way And wash away the inequality So you can't give advice So it would need a dedicated team That is able to craft if not there are Specialists if not there are departments And we know for a fact Even Copter is there quite a number of The bylaws that have been drafted Which are not implemented Are standardized So it is upon the municipality To ensure that those bylaws Get to be customized And speak to the conditions Of that particular area So There's nothing ita ta ta Sichwan cho sena Ka ba di Simply saying eh, this is the schedule Ta kuwa ebo Ta ba ka ku The license Two Ikogwa la di license eh, di penny So ri, ki na na Oh, mu e lo Eh, di siwa Sena za Ona de ho kuwa koe ba ba la Eh, ha ni salusa eh, leli kuwa Ta bi dena mona Te Eh, ha ni salusa Also ya ti pi ho re Mula ho ba ba tu Na di ni tene na de de Di the statement of intent We kenyati bito Kenyati regulations So it means More here na There's going to be the regulations There's going to be the bylaws Te lo ni li ba consistent then Let's say mula is war Consistent with the constitution The business eh, the consumer protection Or eh, the other relevant acts Which would inform How best can we call the economy In the country So, so, so Ha ya ka Ya ni tete ti Fa eh, eh, ba hisu Ne geta kuwa leto This time around Aga ni confining Ki we fe la da Sena besedwe to ka she I know ona de wa tente ba Va kikete Di eh, other issues of importance But was simply saying Okay Ha ni di tene u Pa tembo councillor Pa tembo maju Eh, temba Copter You can actually look into those eh, pressing issues But that's even the last one Because mula eh, eh Every young citizen O na eh, me ho lo O na Re mu ikuwa legislature Ki oketa muna Amo de za Australia she ha mati ha ni keman Then, then go Eh, aga ni ko Aga ni ko ho la mu tu sa Even though Ka ba na le Capability sita ofanaga Ansarate da ita mu Uku si se Ma that is not my space So spaces are Ki ho re Musa maspa Uka Aga ni no Re to weza Sili tuha o na Legislator oversight And this are the fears Waita na kasi Eh, ba ni tete Why you say za ha de Ko ke ni sili tuha o na Bo tro ka na Eba ni te la ni o na O na re she ba I kenyati di tu Ha sa kenyati di tu Dema ba ka Kama ni da bi ti So ne kere he Ha ni di beleka tu ho te Kere ukuwa za muna E lo ni ku tika muna ka she Thanks very much You got all Matsohe May I recognize Friends Ah, ya ni tene Ona mta pozo Ona mta ah, ah, ah As in pozo Pozo fe la ite Ki o le ba ka uka tu ma Tu tho kama iku tu Na o na Ha iki ya ho The owner image ina muna Does not mean The iki ka tene In kisisi Therefore Ma ikuwa o na Uko pa Konexa ra ta keta Ou ta ya Da di ba O re O ne uwa muna O we za ni tiwa o na O ni tene O ke ta ka we za Ne Ha ni tsa ni ke matso Eh, ka ba ni Ke di teka ma li To seki te Pei pi Ki ku ba thwa re Kita fa ni no Oh Ita te mo Ita ro va be Eh, ita te aso ni fe Na ba tu We na muna eh, ita te eh Wa wa ho Wa une la muna Wa o san ku Na ho o se La ku na muna Wa o ku su pa ki Ah, ke te Bu re ma eh Eh, me new Yurdi na baser Eh, there's not a Eight with three Three Eh, den Ki ki la uka di May ki ta Ta matso Na di ya Wa la ni ya uki Ki da koda Ta ka la na uki Eh, ha uku bua he Kaka na muna Eh, ki keta Lu ju ni to Ri Ki na ri Za ni na popa Ni aho na eh, eh Life streaming So ba thwa Tu ma na Ka ba ni ku di Po po Wasu naka Ba she di Le ni te ma Uwa ka Du kuwa ho Eh, o na Mi kuwa o na Ki ase Misfri star da Ma ni te kuwa Uwa ka naka Muna
Eh, ki ya du le ri sa Ka Owa lo yena
Eh, o ta so na Ki to Lo o toka
Ri, ki to The councillor Mu iki tu From the tour Ya le bo Ya ni za ma si Wa msa li Eh, ho Conversation eh, eh Re chayla muna Ita te Ho ba ni ancho ku me la Eh, ni tene ku la mu zu na Eh, ba tu ba na Di business sa Na ki ba tu Tu ni la Ta Eka Eh, bituli man Ki na ri Tu kuwa ebo Te ka ba ni Twenty-six Se ranuan Ki matso ka Renal ni Sa Sei eki Se ranuan Ki matso ka Ho ku na ba tu ba Ay 利benefit Di Tu kuwa ebo Sa bo bo Me ki na na Ka ka ni uli Eh, eh, eh Partmenti ita ka yona Ita ku sa Ho Imba Ta ku pa Eska ba fe la Di se kisi Eh, ita ka yona Den ha ni tu muna Ibe di si Aka ufe la To Muna eh, ho lo mu Ka ta ku pa Se kisi sa Ni yeu Le mu na Pan Se kuwa lo sa bo bo Ya le bo na
Eh, na mta te Ibe tre Ibe tre eh Tu kuwa ebo Aba benefit Eh, doho na Le ri bua Di twenty-six Te lo ni Di ra na Di di ka Le ma kuza So wa Re she Da effort E lo ni kanete Musu ka ka yona Aba tu
Eh, umera Eh, ki tu la ni Ki kola Ni cha Ki tuha Bituli Eh, ki chayla muna Ki katali Ena Ita te na Za ibu muna Ya ho re Eh, misi O tu sebeza
Kasi sa mese kadi si alisite o teza nukwebo teo teo fumanza wala ya registar, di registar Juani, renale nukwebo ere sokolan ma rolo mani etu ere wata o teza internet cafe e ba mas para ona wa kompano o o e monbo yore kolika o teza sebagi se se nori na se se mete se medisimo Juani, eke, retongo o ba, pue nayata tara ikuwa o ri, wata fana kapa wata tuza bo ba tuza retongo ba kamra bo o da te ya ra kompano ake lele tu se mani etu mani leka ilokwa o re noveko eko ilokwa o i, i kanté, o ba ne soja development, leonani irekana o ri itanfa itikoni uta ni indi indi i Juani, lele retoku lo, ya registration i kana retake teo ti la, e bu bolebe, ya registar wala, pana lele i, lele ya suki se kia do bo
Eh, ake nito wa rola Eh, kana na ditha zanté, zantadeo zate du mani nunguayez eh, de department de fe la jo eh, kame ralu e, e kame rewa ne fe la i, ndaki na jo eh, ndatiha, se nado na fe la registration ya kampa a, watu a, kame rey ndaki ake, number three
Eh, kia lebo, e soja mabo, e renale xanetu Eh, retabel of mana eh, na bo ya, ya ore re xanetu maru bo Renale, ti business etere, na kaza wu ti kubila O ba ya harina business area, ake da retwa lebe da wu ti So, renale ti, ti bi ti staxale meleza wu so Se le xoloan kapal
Ademela ma eken hanyane, eh, bokon o
Se, se, se ure bulebe te jo, leke ta ti kasa public work so Eh, mona, no wa, ake neke na hana, o re o re, rekwan o, o te la bele Ti business inte na te, te, te baka, o te la bele kato Ebe na, ki ona re teke na president na bo akayo na ya ore Kapal, lele du melo, ona registete se ti bi ti insite o ta O ba leke ya senye ya hana So, rekaho na, kapal, rekupe, o go maspara ba ona o re Parifet du melo ya o sebe itesa ti business te o Ta, ta, ta public work, o re, rense te Ti, o ba ya kandé ya harina na business area
Wa bole Eh, kulegi de monga
Tra ya, te kati lege, ti kuwa ni, ti kapa kare Kali kito ti, ti ki bole ma kupe O ta, roka ni prespa li ti, zasro Ta, maspara wa, roka ni prespa li ti, berka, editi O ne tole kapa o te la, kaka, ti kuseba Ki ya ka fuma na, kadi wa ya kaka ti li toka na Then, ya ote ona, eh, mona, bili, iti ti ya ona o bili Eh, ti, provincial district and municipal business councils Ya, moni ti kele, kele ba di shagi, chana mona, e no, e no, e no Isu la eba, eke, teke tuza ona, maspara yore yore, participation yore Bili e na eba te ba te But na, kuto se na ona, ona o, uwa toka, eh Eh, ti municipal, eh, business council te Di beri a clear terms of, terms of reference To da, eh, maspara o beza i
I, I am a fellow of the people's heart Eh, koko ba sebe isenai ikuwa na ne Because kama o bo na uwa hala, o be da o Interpreta se kama na di asra ike, na, ala wa toa interprete, lama wa toa wa, ba ti o te fa pa It's fine, okay, okay
Then, te kaza ona, eh, kene na eba, uwa la, 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 la The, the, the business councils Ti kai ni kele, but na, na bo ya ona Eh, bili, ebe, eh, mona, ona o be, o be kele Ona ni ro, sa maspara itaba di simono Ni ti ro, tebe ba, eh, ni, ni council te li za moni, kato na hana Ti te na kofala na dieta Ke na kato dieta, re, ni forma ni kuwa la monu Ebe, eba ni wa eke defent Therefore, ni fe la ni time friend, se kele za ona o Waso ito ebe na o, it should be, it should work Then, secondly, ito o, eka o ni o, kara na da o Ruli, uta kona ona, ona leli editis Re dipende le tomati, teza o, ni maspara te li yinani Re dipende le tomati, o di sector di parime za ona o, di otusa Di snmisa ona, ta o ate ebe ne Therefore, o toko ba ona, bili e na ekama o di, di maspara O, awo na mona di budget, ebe eka presiwa Ebe amwe, ili ona, eina editi budget, ta e So like now, eh, ek municipal level De ona leli di maspara, kaburo na Re xolo, tuza ba toka ona, ek local level Ra ra na mona, dipende ek national appropriation level Therefore, tweli ya ona, di budget starta di maspara, di beri editi budget Even tweli mona o, e forma di municipal, eka ma di maspara ona, o no Di beri gana di budget starto Then, ya o te da If we meto ona, te kima na mona, o bo no Ona lete ki ta, ita te wa, ta te ki businesses te wa, ni mona o, ni ekama O bo no, ebe ka o ta ba, kaka ona, te o, se te kaba, kaka ona, o, iti te se Te wa ni fre, ni kaka, te wa ni teka mona If we meto ona, awo nko maspara i Kana le, cooperative, eba ni, inari, i, i Inari ma yu kuwa o teza, eh, small scale mining Ebe ti kiri na ona, o no, mu ro, kama unka ta kaka lipi Iti de, bo imo bo, arwa ma yu iti Eh, bo na, small, small scale mining Ika, ika, ita la mu, mu lema o Therefore, I never, toko ba onyo ye Isu a, ake, o weleka sa ona se Then, te ni haritso, na toka ni wa, klo kare ya di omani Eka ba, waiting and captivity Ke we ba ni na ona, uwa ona, ba, ba ni, ba, ba shoma ona, o, di beka ona, ito ma ti Then, last, ebe ma, eza ona, ajo ari Ya hala ma, koto me na ono, aluminia products Ki, ki te ni te wa, ki kele especially ni u Therefore, te, ba, ba, ba shoma ni ita, ni, ni, o, ona ta, ni na da o, ta kanga Ah, maharwa, kaka ni fe ni te ti Ni kai ni ona, o di aluminia products, manufacturing Ni na na, ni seki ni wa ni wa la kasa Therefore, ona, te lema fe, thank you
Eh, my friends, alatela, eh, kuya uha ti de monga Eh, all clarity, te shiniya, the business councils There's wellness municipality terms of this game And they're over here, they're scheduled man, you know He is over there Hora
Eh, ye tama Ye tama, du ketelos, omo, o provincial secretary Provincial secretary, a nampok free state Eh, is that machine, es lau talo, uba ma siye, zeha Ime ollo, part chapter one Si, is a, sa, mi da ollo, o, we definition Eh, citizen, means citizens of the republic By, well The sentence or naturalization As contemplated in the South African Eh, citizens act of nineteen ninety five, act number eighty eight of nineteen ninety five And may not include asylum seekers and refugees So, is that machine, part chapter two Si, eh, da, oti, economic activities reserved for citizens Six point two, the business, eh, the, the business activities that are designed in section one Are exclusively and solely reserved for ownership and operation By any citizens of the republic Any foreign persons wanting to do business in the republic Must do so as an immigrant investor according to The Business Act of nineteen ninety one and/or provide skills That are not present in the republic Chapter three, si, sa, bo da in jaro Eh, chapter four, si, lau talo, uba, we include the Asian, those landline Part two, number twelve Eh, relevant provincial organs of state must in order to facilitate the flow Of financial resources to sector based Eh, enterprises and business chambers Di, assist businesses, eh, organization and chambers With operational resources and finances For the purpose of advancing and promoting small business development And enhancement of the economy Chapter six, di, upon adoption of this, eh, of the bill All law enforcement agencies, including subs, immigration, consumer protection Eh, sales, etc., must work together with municipalities To add capacity and ensure that the bill is enforced Section one, would like to add the following Three, eh, hyper industry in general Twenty nine, butcheries must also be added Bankers must be added, taxis and public transport must be added Let them be reserved for South African citizens Then, city to city two Provincial editi forums be established Which, which will assist municipalities
Same, is, same, is similar One in the raft of the bylaw And enforcement of size bylaw
The forum must include both government, departments, municipalities and
The business organization at different level of our, eh, residence, thank you
Eh, roba na, la na la, fa kato Eh, sele di kota o, na Eh, di tama, si ni jo Eh, re refe la rebe, di lucho ku lo Eh, so that This technical glitch ya ken di bo, koz Sa ona, ni proseseta legislature, kame lele reko di Ani di mo sa reko di, o ti che, e si ni Heki hanyane fe la tu Leke wa identifiya, taka, taka, wa, ni so ti o te la
Mashe banan, jen ni ita
Oh Lepse, mara sigre koda Bled, si, 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 si So yana re, si, 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 si Ya kawa te Zaki, di kasi ye ni se La, eh, na moni, talisha
Eh, mona, na moni Kiti oki
I trepa je
Oh
Si sa mu tu se ni kele ya, la, si
Beleka, eh, fa la di
Wa yana ma
Eh, fa la di O si, si O sa, di, karo, o Ek si la Oh, oh, oh Ya kui, ya kui Si a, kui si Eh Eh, oma
So, kala, 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 kala Si, si
........................
Check one, two. There is a problem here, the government is not able to answer the data. Now it is too late. The government is not able to answer the question. Uh, the Taliban have tried again, but they have not answered the question. They have not answered the question. They have not answered the question. Uh, the Taliban have never given us support. They have not answered the question. The earlier they asked, they did not answer. The information center, they have not answered. They did not answer the question. And the people who are there, they are not answering the question. They are not answering. So, I am upset that you don't answer the question. Because who? What do you want? What do you want to do? What do you want to do? Because the government has said that the government is not answering the question. They have not answered the question. The information center, and in the coffee shop. However, the coffee shop is not there on the board. The coffee shop is not there on the board. The coffee shop is not there on the board. Uh, the bar is not answered. The telephone box, it is empty. It is empty man. As well as, it is empty. It is empty. The money is not answered. Because the second is just a drift of money. However, the money is not answered. This is 20%. Okay, what? Now, and the government is not answering 20%. The government is 80%, 100%. It is not answered. Where is it? The government is not answering. Citizen number one. Not citizen number seven. The government is not answering. The government is not answering. It is not answered. However, the government is not answering. 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 All of them, I, I, yes, I would take that. Oh, we can tell about, now, we are 20%. It is not answered. 300%. The government is not answering. It is not answered. Uh, this is the public works. The public works is empty. It is not answered. However, the government is not answering. The government is not answering. However, it is empty. It is empty. The government is not answering. The public works is empty. The government is not answering. The government is not answering. But the register is empty. It is empty. This is empty. Ah, this is empty. This is empty. This is empty. The government is empty. The government is empty. This is empty. The government is not answering. It is empty. Oh, the government is not answering. This is empty. This is empty. The shop is empty. This is empty. As 15 years old. However, the government is not answering. It is not answered. The government is empty. Then, this is not answered. However, it is empty. Next, you do not answer. It is empty. As you do not answer. You do not answer. It is empty. The government is not answering. The government is not answering. It is empty. It is empty. The government is empty. The government is empty. It is empty. The register is empty. The register is empty. The government is not answering. The government is not answering.
How did you get there? Can I know about it? Uh, when did I come? I think the government had a different set of key. The desregistration of the business. And the investment. The goal, it is not. Uh, but not that. Uh, how did I get there? Gentlemen, let me clear. Oh, okay. You finished today. You come after.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this one council from Mokore. Um, I think this bill is, uh, uh, in the right direction. Moving in the right direction. I've only got one or two concerns. Number one, municipal investment and incentive policy. Uh, we can give the incentives we want. Uh, as many as we want. With our roads full of portals, no service delivery. Nobody is going to come and invest. Uh, the second thing is, the gentleman before me already said that there is no taxes on the list. We need the taxes on the list. Because the moment we do the other businesses, we leave the taxes, the farmers is going to go to the taxes. That's a fact. The other thing we need, we need job creation. I understand what you're trying to do, which is right. For the townships to have spazershops and businesses for South Africans. But they only employ one or two people. We sit with 50, 60, 60% unemployment. How? Who's going to buy at these spazershops? Who's going to utilize these businesses? If nobody's got jobs. Where is the money going to come from to buy? The other thing is, the province will have to put his hand deep into his pocket to help the municipalities with this bill, to get it off the floor. Because the municipalities at this moment hasn't got money to buy a navy. There is no money. So, how are they going to see that this bill is being done? So, I think what we really got to do is to think out of the box and really create jobs. So that when we implement this bill, there is people that can buy. And we don't sit with people in townships and in towns with licenses coming out of their ears, but there is nobody to buy from. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Your input is noted. Uh, when I got the meeting.
Salam, good salam. The government is not answering. Salam, Sazewa. Uh, Sanaa, which he got from investment field. We are deserted. The government is not answering. Uh, in that, this is the world. They are not. This is Africa. They are not Africa. In that, they are not. They are not. This is not. They are not Africa. They are Africa. Oh, we are not deserted. We are not. They are not. They are not. The government is not answering. They are not. They are not. They are not. They are not. And when you ask me to do this, they are not. 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 And then, we register each business as well. They are not. We are not. Business, I have registered long. We are not. We are not. Registered. We are not. Business, I have registered. I am not. Let me tell you. Now, I don't have any more. I don't have any more. Most of them. I'm not. Business, I don't. The government is not answering. I am not. 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 They are not. I am not. They are not. So, now, the government is not answering. I don't have. I am not. However, I don't have money. I am not. Hence, I am not. I am not. I am not. I am not. They are not. I am not. I am not. They are not. They are not. I am not. I am not. We are not uniform. I am not. I am not. I am not. So, now, they are not. So, now, they are not. I am not. To the government, and the government is not answering. It is not. It is not. In the free government, I should have done that. I was not. The government is not answering. I am not. I am not. It is not. I am not. I am not.
Now, now, I will talk about this. Uh, let's start with the Naha. Come on, Africa. Oh, I am not. Africa, South Africa. I think you are the last.
Good morning. My name is Resol. I'm from Parita. I have a few questions and concerns. Um, firstly, there is no, there is no defined deadline between application and issuing of licensing. So, to avoid backlogs, I believe there should be, uh, maybe 20 days or 30 days between application and issuing of licenses. Secondly, the CRPC and SARS registration would backlog. It motivate, um, small businesses to operate. Um, then, with the grass of foreign nationals with, with residency, um, I, I think they should have provision to limit, to limit the number of, uh, one foreign national earning 20 businesses or employing X amount of, of other foreign nationals. Um, then, where all the funding for the officials to, uh, who needs to implement the bill, uh, come from? And the 30% that's, uh, stated in chapter 240 of, of economic mainstream, they have 30% of the quota being produced by, by, uh, locally. I think retailers should be defined. Um, locally produced should be defined because locally produced to compare to anything from Gari to Kapanong to South Africa. Um, and then also, 30% of the businesses on the list is, uh, at the moment, um, is attracted to auto security, which is not, uh, yeah, it's a risk at the moment. So, for investors to, to invest in Kapanong at the moment, there is a risk with auto security. So, loans, car washes, all of those businesses will not be able to operate.
No, thanks very much. Uh, that. About that, you do not know? Okay, no, I talk about that. Uh, that the manager, the manager said.
I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. I am not. I am not. Can I tell you something? She is not. She is not. She is not. I am 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 not. This is not. This is not. I am not. I am not. I am not. I am not. Business. She is not. I am not. I am not. I am not. I am not. However, I am not. I am not. I am not. District. Every district, I am not. 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 Which means, I am not. 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 So, I am not. I am not. However, I am not. 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 The extent of this is not. I am 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 not. Trump's back. Which was, I was not. I am 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 hoping today. I am not. 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 We don't know. I am not.
Thanks very much. That is my pleasure.
Right, I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. Uh, I am not. Uh, I am not. Uh, then, can I, I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. 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 Uh, I am not. Uh, I am not. I, I am not. I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. And then, uh, I, uh, I am not. I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. 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 Uh, I am not. 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 My department, I am not. I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. I am not. Department, I am not. I am not. I am not. I am not. And then, I am not. I am not. Then, uh, business, I am not. Uh, systeming. It is not. Start. Everything, I am not. Uh, it is not. Uh, I am not. 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 That's why, I am not. I am not. I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. 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 The business, I am not. I am not. It is not. The business, I am not. Uh, I am not. I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. I am not. Then, I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. 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 Uh, I am not. 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 Then, I am not. 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 I am not.
No, thanks very much. That is my pleasure. Uh, the girls have talked to me. I think, consciousness, I have investment, there is a percentage as well as the normal foreign business, which does not necessarily talk about presentation. So that they understand the way. Or, uh, the presentation, I am not. Uh, and as well as the presentation, because there seems to be a confusion there. Okay, thank you. I am not.
Uh, I am not. 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 Then, I am not. 20%. I am not. I am not. Uh, I am not. 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 South African. I am not. 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 Uh, immigration. Act early. How it is? I am not. 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 When I am here to work or to study. How are you familiar with this? Then, it is, but I am not. 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 I am not.
Okay. Now, so, I will, uh, register on our, on our basis. The chief of registration, Arun Eko, to give some responses and, uh, the general, the maximum as far as the people is concerned. That is my pleasure.
Thank you very much. The master, let's start, uh, questioning area. What does local mean? Just asked. Obviously, because it's a provincial, it need to be provincial law. Local will be free state. But, I am not. Principal, Mola. Mola, what province? So, I am not. So, I am not. Who explain now, South Africa is a country, it local. Now, Mola, who, who, who is not? I am not. It is free state.